You take the roll, please.
Anthony Marosi.
Here.
Kim Connor. Dennis Gagnon.
Here.
David Hardy.
Here.
Peter Lewis.
Here.
Neil Tolman.
Here.
Neil's up for me.
Approval of minutes, February regular monthly meeting. Any additions, deletions, corrections, modifications? I'll entertain a motion to adopt the minutes from February.
I'll make the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Welcome to the March meeting of the Philistown Planning Board. We have one public hearing tonight. Excuse me. Hey.
Gentlemen.
Thank you.
Counselor.
Public hearing for Hudson Highlands Land Trust, Inc. Applicant is seeking approval of subdivision plat to adjust the line dividing lands of Hudson Highlands Land Trust, Inc., from lands of Wing Somers Keith. Mr. Gainer was directed at February meeting to prepare a draft approval resolution to be voted on this evening pending the outcome of the public hearing. The applicant or representative here?
Yes, that would be glad.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
Give him a chance to pull his magic out of the hat.
Leonard Watson from Baedian Watson, representing the Hudson Highlands Land Trust, and his application to adjust their lot line, the lot line of their property with that of Wing Keith. Story is simply told with the portion of the map that I had handed out to you. The property contains about 70--
Do you need Glenn to hold the mic or by you?
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Seventy-seven acres.
Yeah, the property contains a total of, there's a total of 77 acres involved in the property, and right now it's split of five acres and 72 acres. And if you look to the left side of the handout that I gave you, or which is a portion of the map, you'll see that Ms. Keith owns this rectangle in the middle of the property owned by Hudson Highlands Land Trust. The intention is to sell a conserved piece of property or to, to Ms. Keith that will result, and which is a portion of the overall holdings of the Hudson Highlands Land Trust, so the configuration that you see here with the small rectangle will become, will change to the configuration that you see immediately to the right, where the distribution of the property will be 47 and 30 acres remaining in the land trust. The property was previously approved and filed. This was the form of Roman property. It is the intention to merge this additional parcel into the Keith property. No further subdivision, and it will be subject to a conservation easement. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have if I'm able.
The board? Steve? Ron?
No, we have nothing. As Chair indicated, we were directed last month to prepare a draft approval resolution, which we've earlier transmitted to the board, thus before you tonight for consideration upon the close of the public hearing.
And it was also noted last month that a motion was made for a site visit. We determined that it was not necessary since it's just a lot line adjustment. Just briefly, Glenn, the basic reason for doing this?
Well, as you know, the land trust is dedicated to preserving scenic property in the Highlands in our general area, and they, in this particular case, which is relatively unusual, they purchased a piece of property and do not intend to hold it. So this is an opportunity for them to divest themselves of a portion of the property, put a conservation easement on it, assure that there'll be no further building on the property, recap the investment they made in the fee acquisition, the basic ownership of the property, so that it can be recycled into another project. And this is ideal situation because they have an interior owner that is desirous of having more property, is willing to take it with the conservation easement. So the goals of both parties will be achieved, and essentially it will forever protect that portion of the property.
Okay, thank you. Now, open it up to the public. Is there anyone here to comment? Sir? State, stand up and state your name for the record, please.
My name is Eric Erickson.
You have to come over to the microphone, sir.
Up here? Yep. He's decided I have to do this. You're doing fine. I'm good.
Hi, Eric Erickson, Fort Defiance Hill Road. What happens to the remaining property that Hudson Highlands Trust owns? And how many houses, if any, can be built upon that?
I can respond.
There is a, presently one building lot approved and available. That right will remain with the Hudson Highlands Land Trust. And it is my understanding that they will seek a purchaser for the rest of the property with the proviso, with the anticipation of building a lot, building a house on that remaining lot. And that would be the maximum number of lots that would ever be built here for a couple of reasons. First of all, the land trust will impose further conservation easements on the rest of the property. And secondly, the maximum number of houses allowed under the current zoning law, actually the current subdivision regulations, is already at its maximum. So the owner, A, will not be able to subdivide it because of the conservation easement, and were they able to subdivide it, they would not be able to get it approved for building because of the town's local regulations.
So to reiterate, there's just one building lot?
That's correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I guess, yes.
Would you state your name, please, and step up to the mic?
I'm just trying to see the map.
Susan Coleman. I'm a very grateful landowner, grateful to the land trust for doing this. And I am wondering where the possible lots, the building sites are on this, if they're indicated?
What would you point about?
First of all, we are not completely sure. There is another building lot on it, and that has been discussed with the board, and they are prepared to deal with there never being a building lot, and they're never being able to recover the money out of, from, or the value of a building lot out of the property. We are investigating an area to the extreme northwest of the property, up in this area adjacent to the Guernsey property.
They have Guernsey.
Well, that, they're out on Travis Corners Road. They back up against the property. But if you were to go up--
What's that meant that you pointed?
Now, this is Travis Corners Road.
Okay.
This is Fort Defiance Road going all the way up to the top.
I see. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If you get up to a point here where you turn left to go up to the Dugan, Dugan property--
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If you were, go up that road, it would be off to the left of that road.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Anyone else, please? Sir?
Glenn, just stand forward, I can't see you.
Some people might consider that a good thing.
Hi, my name is Pat Dugan, and I own some property in this area, this piece here. And I think, Glenn, what you're describing is the road going up to my house, that where there's possibly a building lot.
That's correct.
Okay. And that was my understanding, that after it was kicked around last time, that there would be only one more lot to be built on, one more house to be built. And that's still in effect, as far as I know.
That's correct.
That's correct.
And that's consistent with what I said.
Okay. And I'm pretty sure I know the spot you're thinking about. There's a little flat spot to the left as you go up the hill.
That's correct.
Okay. I guess, I certainly have right-of-way going up there, and I have not consulted a lawyer, but I would assume that on a transfer of ownership, that my right-of-way would carry along with it, or else I couldn't get up to my house. It's the only way to get up there. So I assume there's no problem there. I certainly hope there isn't any problem. I read the stuff that the planning board sent out, and in the third paragraph, the proposal is to transfer approximately 42.27 acres of land currently owned by HHLT to Keith. No new development is proposed. Does that have any force behind it that will not be developed, or is it up in the air? It just sounds, the way this reads, it's not proposed, but maybe it'll be proposed tomorrow.
The, as I tried to explain before, there are limitations on what can be built on this property. That you're correct, when the Romans were in and went through what they did to get everything legal, there was a restriction that would be no more building lots from the planning board. As I explained before, the open development regulations would prevent any further lots from being mapped on this private right-of-way, because there's a limit. And in fact, there was, that limit has been exceeded. Moreover, the land trust is, the commitment of the land trust to prevent development or severely limit development on the property is evidenced by their actions throughout the town. And what they've related to me is that if they can, if there is a building lot, and frankly, we're not sure there's enough dirt to put in a septic system, but if there is a building lot, there will be one building lot, and that will be transferred to the person who's going to build the house or buy it for building a house. It's going to be transferred to them with the proviso that there be no further subdivisions. So really, really, you know, I have a friend in town that I always, as he wears a belt and suspenders, and now we're adding an elastic waistband.
Okay. Well, you can see my concern, that if somebody buys that lot that we're talking about, which is right on the road up to my house, and they decide they don't like me driving up there anymore, and they're telling me that we own this land and we don't want it, again, I should have consulted a lawyer. But is my right-of-way that I have in writing, of course, from the original acquisition, is that still, does that transfer to whoever owns it?
Well, I'm not a lawyer, but it never stops me from giving opinions. The right-of-way is shown on the map.
Right.
All right? The right-of-way is yours, the ground under it is not yours, but you have a right to use it. And that right came with the house, and it's yours. And they always, the lawyers talk about, or I guess the lawyer professors, talk about a bundle of sticks, and you get a stick at your right-of-way, and they can't take that away from you. The only one that can take that away from you is you. So, and we have provided, and we have shown that any conveyance of this piece of property will be referring to this map, which will show the right-of-way, and any title company will, would pick it up and would accept your rights from their insurance. In other words, they have, would have to take title subject to your rights.
Okay. I think, I always, and he fears I would have, and I don't think I have to hire a lawyer at this point, so, okay.
Glad to help.
Thank you.
Anyone else, please?
I just got a quick question. Is there, there's an existing lot?
I have to insist, Bobby, stand up, station, here for the record.
Just real quick, I just want to make sure that I'm clear.
There's an existing lot already, and now there's going to be an additional one?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. Got you. Okay. Now, just, because you talked about one. You have, there are two lots today, the Keith lot, which is the old Cattell Castle, and this large orange spot. Simply what we're going to do is make this bigger so that it looks like this. So there's--
You mentioned one lot, then what are you going to do? Okay, got you. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Any last comments from the board? Motion to close the hearing?
I'll make that one.
Second?
No, second.
Ron has prepared a resolution. Quick summary, Ron, I don't want to strain your vocal cords.
No, I mean, it includes the standard conditions, as has been described. It only represents a lot line adjustment, no creation of new lots, no new development proposed. It only becomes a subdivision pursuant to the subdivision regulations due to the size of a lot transfer, so, the property's size. So there's very standard conditions that are typical.
Motion to adopt the resolution? Of approval?
Thank you very much.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Old business, Taylor Fataisi, 220 South Highland Road Garrison. Public hearing was held and closed, and Mr. Gainer was directed at the February meeting to prepare draft seeker and application resolution. We are in possession of the resolutions and a seeker declaration. Ron, any quick comment?
Again, they're very typical formats. Let's see. The applicant has been working to resolve the recommendations made by the Garrison Fire District. They've been modifying the plans over the intervening period of last month to now. There's still a few technical issues that I've asked them to resolve, and so the approval reso identifies among standard conditions. Resolution of technical issues contained in the Town Engineers Memorandum of March 15, which you also have a copy of. Other than that, they're standard conditions. We're also asking that the modified easement, which is necessary to permit the applicants to build in the area they're proposing, be submitted to and reviewed or approved by the town attorney's office prior to endorsement of the plat.
Okay. Any questions from board members? We have a negative declaration under seeker before us. Motion to adopt.
Who made that motion?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we have a resolution of approval for the Taylor Fataisi application. Motion to adopt.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number three. Miranda L. Grimm, Juve trustee. Applicant is seeking approval for final subdivision plat, lot line adjustment. Excuse me. To adjust the line dividing lands of trustee Helen L. Grimm, irrevocable trust, from lands of Herbert L. Grimm, irrevocable trust.
This application is from the Grimm's family's trusts to adjust the lot line between what was the eldest of the Grimm family members' properties, so that the main house on the estate can be sold, and a significant portion of the property that was associated with that piece of property, with the main piece of property, can be retained by the family. And again, similar to the HHLT application, the story is really told in this little handout that I gave you. We start out with a property, with a small piece and quite a large piece, and somewhere out here I have the areas, a three-acre piece and a 21-acre piece. Want to adjust the lot line to reduce the size of the 21-acre piece and increase the size of the three-acre piece, so that we have a 14-acre piece that's retained by the family, and a 10-acre piece that's sold with the main house and the outbuildings associated with it. We have, I know there's a couple of issues raised in Ron's memo, particularly with regard to the location of the property line. We've moved the property line away from the wall. The primary reason, quite frankly, is because the family wants to maintain the wall that lines their driveway, they want to have control of it, and they want to use it. But we also have a restriction, I believe, and I can't cite the thing, where in this kind of larger lot subdivision, there's a restriction, there's an offset requirement for a driveway. But, so, the one issue that Ron raised with regard to that was the fact that the driveway, that the property line is not on the wall as we might typically, where we might typically put it. And the second issue is a question of the use of what I had labeled as a two-story guest house, and is actually, in fact, it's a two-story building garage under with guest quarters above. I certainly will correct the label, and I had--
By guest quarters, you mean accessory apartment?
Accessory apartment, guest quarters. It's kind of a funny situation, but yes.
Well, we don't point it out necessarily, but I mean, it's nevertheless an accessory apartment.
Right. So that's really the whole story. There's no action anticipated except to be able to sell a smaller piece with the main house than was, is today associated with that main house. The property, I should have said, the property is well up East Mountain Road, all the way over the top and partway down the other side to where Perkins, Perkins Road crosses.
Okay. Question from the board?
Just one last just point, I can pass this out. With regard to my mislabeling, that particular structure, those are pictures of the front and back of it, so you can see there's a garage underneath it.
Pass them around. Sorry.
Yes, for the file, yeah. Just, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Comments, Ron?
Yep, there's a technical memorandum that you received from my office earlier this week. This is the first time the application has appeared before the board for their initial appearance. The property itself, Clarence Fenstock Park, abuts it in the rear. The East Mountain Road south along the front edge of the property also is in your scenic corridor, so that's another overlay that should be shown on the plat. However, it's recognized that there's no new development being proposed. Again, it's a lot line adjustment, but it gets tripped by the subdivision requirement because of the size of the parcel adjustment between the two lots. So it's deemed a subdivision. Referrals have to be made to Putnam County Planning due to the proximity of Clarence Fenstock Park. I had raised some zoning issues in my technical memorandum, I'm sure the board has seen it. Glenn has touched on it. I mean, I think all of us recognize the desire to use stone walls as physical boundaries for lot line adjustments, or for any lot boundary. In this instance, he's also forced to deal with a supplementary regulation in zoning that requires that driveway to be at least 10 feet off the property line. And that's why they have not used the stone wall. And it's actually, the property line goes well beyond the stone wall. My concern was just the issue of long-term conflicts over adjacent owners. I asked Steve to investigate it, which he can speak to, but my wonder was whether the board could waive that and keep it simple, but it's never simple. So would require ZBA action if the board wanted the support moving that wall to the stone wall, so I wouldn't propose you pursue that unless you see that as very desirable. And then the other zoning issue that we had raised was the issue of multiple residences on the lot. Again, you have a section of your zoning code that addresses that. It seems as though Glenn has addressed that by notation on the plat to identify the secondary residences as accessory apartments, which is permitted. So that potential conflict appears to be resolved. We have some technical issues for him to address. Let's see, with respect to seeker, I think as the board recently learned with the prior application, lot line adjustments are now classified by New York State DEC pursuant to their seeker regulations that, they are now classified as a type-two action, which requires no further environmental review. You should just merely so identify it as such in the record tonight. So there's a few things to do. One, declare it a minor subdivision, which it qualifies for. And secondly, to identify the project as a type-two action pursuant to seeker, to conclude your seeker responsibilities. Then you could also make referrals outside agencies and--
Other than PC planning, other than PC planning, Putnam County planning?
Yeah, there's no others, right. That's a statutory requirement.
Yeah.
A general municipal law. Can't be avoided. And then you--
I think there's a waiver request in there, too?
Yeah, there's a few waivers. There's some plat information that's typically performed for subdivisions, but again, it's not especially necessary on just a lot line adjustment. I've identified a few waivers that you might want to consider. Normally, if the board doesn't object, I just bill that into any approval reso that you ultimately act on. you ultimately act on. So you should determine when a public hearing should be scheduled and then determine if you need a site walk. Again, it's just a lot line adjustment, so you may not find that as necessary. Turn it back to you.
A lot of these issues, we said a public hearing, a lot of these issues can be finalized through the public hearing, no?
Yeah.
Steve, any comments?
The only thing I'd say, I think Ron covered it very well. The only thing I'd say is the issue of possibility of relocating the driveway, which would unfortunately necessitate going to the zoning board, if it's something you might want to look into, if the board's familiar with the property, then you've probably made up your minds already. If you're not, it's the kind of thing you might want to have a site visit just to look at that one aspect of it and decide, is it okay the way they've drawn it out, or do you want to relocate that driveway for this?
Okay. Anything else on the board? All right, I'll, motion to declare it a minor subdivision? Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, motion to classify under seeker as a type-two action?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to refer to Putnam County Planning? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to skip that one for a moment and come back to it. Establish immediate motion to set up a public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second that.
Okay. These two maybe go hand in hand. Establish whether any waivers from the plat information normally required in subdivision plat should be considered in this instance. Do you have a recommendation on that?
Yeah, we have no objection to the granting of those waivers.
Okay.
Because again, there's no development being proposed.
Right, right.
It's just a lot line adjustment.
Does that require a motion?
Sure does.
Okay, motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, thank you. We got a public hearing. Do we want to do a site visit?
You've got to vote on the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Got a motion, a second, you just need a vote.
Yeah. All in favor of the public hearing motion?
Aye.
Thank you. Do we want to do a site visit? We have, anyone familiar with it, not familiar, who think it's necessary? Comments? Give me a couple of dates, please, and we'll see.
The first possible date would be the 31st. And then the 7th and the 14th.
Does anyone want to make a motion to the effect of 31st? Or do you think we not need it? Neil? Okay. No motion? There'd be no site visit. Does that cover everything? I guess that's it.
Since this is a lot line adjustment, and since Mr. Zuckerman is not here, would you consider asking Mr. Gaynor to draft resolutions for your decision anticipation of the close of the public hearing?
Okay. Motion, yeah, motion to that effect? Anyone?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So directed, Ron?
Thank you.
Just because you get sick doesn't mean we're going to let you not work.
He's broken in, as he can. Call for sympathy for crying out loud.
Sympathy? Yeah. Steve, it's all sailor gives no sympathy.
You find it in the dictionary under S?
Okay. Item four, 1122 Route 9D Realty. Applicant is seeking site plan approval to construct canopy over the gasoline pumps. Also seeks to add accessory use of used car sales. Property is located in a hamlet mixed use district, consists of approximately one acre. Go ahead. Please stand in front of the microphone.
My name is Bart Lansky. Maternity for applicant, 28 Ridgeway, Purdy's, New York, 10578. 1122 Route 9D Realty LLC is applicant. Arafat Abraham is here for applicant. This is the existing Garrison Golf Station. It's been a gas station since 1960. It has a small store, convenience store, and two doors for repairs. It has two MPDs, two multi-pump dispensers for gasoline. And this is a request for a minor change to the site plan. There was a site plan approved in 2011, which included a canopy. And applicant is currently seeking a canopy in the same location. To my understanding, it's a 24 by 36 canopy. And he is seeking to do used cars sales, which I understand have occurred at the property through time and are often incidental, or an accessory use to a service station. I understand the code here does not have a definition to that effect, or any definition which necessarily addresses this. So he's allocated five spots on the property for used car sales to make sure that it's legalized. He's requesting that the canopy be re-approved. Apparently, the former approvals, he requested them and was unable to attend, obtain a copy. And he purchased the property in November of 2014 and doesn't have all the records from the previous owner. He purchased it from Global, I believe, who was, might have been Worex at that time. Okay, we have, I believe, an EAF was submitted. It was a long-form EAF, then I think a short form is appropriate. I think there was also some statements on the EAF which weren't fully researched, so I'd like to submit another EAF as part of our continued submission. We did receive a letter from Mr. Gaynor. I believe the architect went back through the plans and submitted new plans and made most of the changes which were on that letter. I believe they're mostly addressed. We also had a letter received from a neighborhood association today. They had a number of comments with regard to categorically the accuracy of the EAF, cleanliness, the environmental, and the design, and I wanted to touch on those subjects. The EAF, as I mentioned, I guess was filled out by the architect, but it wasn't fully researched, and so certainly that letter found some inaccuracies, and I'm going to submit a short form within the next week or so. There were some, within that letter, there was some mention of cleanliness of the site, and we're just at spring, and applicant had an opportunity to clean up the site today. But some of that was left over from being under the snow. And some was not on the property and some was, but as of today, he's cleaned up the property. There was mention of a previous spill from a previous owner. And the concern, I guess, from the neighborhood association was that there would be some type of contamination which would come off-site because there was monitoring wells, what have you, on the site. The spill was closed, and so there is no continuing action on the site. The only way that we'd have any change to that is if applicant goes in and builds his canopy and his footings and he encounters some type of contamination, then there might be a new spill opened up and there might be additional remediation. And the only result with that would be you would have more contaminated materials removed and the site would be cleaner. And that's if he encounters anything. There's, you know, New York State, as compared to Connecticut, as an example, has very strict spill reporting and guidelines. It is rare that a spill gets closed when there's contamination above levels. It's only if they, in an instance like this, if they find that it's just a pocket of water trapped and it's not, it's not moving at all. The other comments were mostly about the design of the station. And I've had a conversation with applicant about that. He's been here since 2014. I've been in Phillips Town about 20 years, and I know, I remember when they did the work on the school over there. And I know it's a historic area and people are sensitive to the aesthetics there. And so we're going to take a second look at the canopy and take a look at maybe doing something similar with a gable roof, with some shingles on it to try to soften it. The station itself is a typical 1960s gas station with, you know, ACM metal panels on it, which you would see anywhere across the country. And that's why the application had a canopy, which is typical as well. But we're going to review that and talk about doing a resubmission on the canopy. The canopies now, whereas in 1960 they were very, very rare, now they are considered to be important for safety, and almost every gas station has one. If they're going to continue to be a gas station, the norms have changed. People aren't willing to get out of their car in the snow and in the rain if there's not a canopy. And for safety purposes, you have the downlighting, you don't get the snow, you don't get the rain right at the pump, and so if there is a little bit of driblets or something coming out of a pump, you don't have the water coming through it. The staff has an opportunity to clean up. And so the canopy was previously approved in this location. We understand the concerns from the neighborhood association, but we'd like the board to look at it as, of course, a minor change to the site plan because it is in fact in conformance with the most recent site plan. And what we're talking about is a use which is typically incidental to a repair use, which is selling a couple of used cars, which has occurred at that property. I've seen the cars there many, many years before Mr. Abraham came to this property. And so, and we want to be thoughtful with the neighborhood and try to make it a good station and try to have it blend in a little bit more. You have something else to add? Okay, that's, that's all I have.
Any comments, Ron?
Yeah, you have a technical review from my office. Let's see, the applicant did appear at last month's meeting, but in his discussions during that appearance acknowledged that the, there was occasional used car sales. There's actually been a violation issued on the project, on the property for that very reason. I've asked town attorney to research that to understand if that may be deemed an appropriate or acceptable accessory use to the automobile service station use that exists on the property, so Steve will speak to that in a while. Now that he's modified the plans and the EAF and resubmitted those application materials, there's still very significant holes in both the site plan and the EAF, to the extent that I didn't even attempt to identify changes to the EAF. I mean, I've suggested that the design engineer speak to me personally so we can walk through that, because very little effort was made, and numerous errors are contained in it, missing information, incomplete information in many cases. So the EAF needs to be totally rewritten. I've identified a variety of plat requirements. There's an issue of exterior storage. He's got, he's got cars there that are awaiting repair, those that have been, repairs have been completed and not yet picked up by the owners. There's the issue of previous site contamination, which has been touched on by Mr. Lansky. I am in the process of trying to obtain records from DEC to understand what has transpired relative to the spill on the property and whether there's any more recent issues that DEC has identified. Want to make sure that the, the registration of the tanks are in effect, are fully compliant with DEC regulations. There's the issue of vehicular screening that you touched on at your initial meeting a month ago. Many of these things, I think, really point to the need for the board to make a site inspection. I raised a concern over the architecturals of the canopy, which again, the applicant has spoken to. And relative to the canopy, there's a related issue of signage, which I think the board is going to have very significant issues with over what's currently showing on the plat. So all of that, I think, can get better understood if the board decides to conduct a site inspection for the property. And, and that's what I would suggest. There is a referral that's necessary. You've got to go to county planning, as is often the case. So that referral needs to be accomplished. And I heard the applicant talk about the environmental assessment form. I would strongly recommend that the applicant continue to file a full EAF Part I, just given the history of the project and the concerns raised by my office, I think the board previously, and the local residents. It's not a terrible, terrible burden to place on the applicant, so I would continue to recommend that be filed.
Steve, any comments?
Well, the issue that I looked into is the accessory car sales issue. And as has been discussed, there's no single definition of what an accessory use is under the town code, and that's very common. Very few town, village, or city codes are going to have a single definition or an all-encompassing definition of what an accessory use is. An accessory use generally, though, under the code, is a use that is usually and customarily operated on a site in connection with whatever the main use is. And the second part of the equation is the use has to be clearly secondary to the main use. So here you have a request to sell cars. The accessory use of car sales, I believe, if my memory serves, has been recognized in the town of Phillips Town in connection with repair garages. I don't think I've ever seen it in connection with gasoline stations, which doesn't necessarily preclude you from finding that it would be an accessory use with a filling station.
There is a, there is a repair garage in place on the site as well as the sale of-
I know, there's two uses. I was getting there, Ron, give me a second. But here you have a little bit of a hybrid. So you have a repair garage and a filling station, so it could be that you find that this is usual and customary with gasoline filling stations, or maybe you say, no, the filling station prevents, it's what's usual and customary as far as this area goes. The other aspect to it is you have to decide if the proposed accessory use is clearly secondary to the repair and the gasoline station. What that means is, when you give an accessory use, it's not just used car sales. And in this case in particular, they say it's five used cars. We're going to limit it to five used cars. That's going to be the accessory use, five used cars. Five used cars, and you know, it's your decision ultimately, of course, but it seems to me isn't the type of thing that's going to overwhelm this site. If they said 20 used cars, you might say, wait a minute, it's not an accessory use anymore. But five, I mean, if you find that, and I think you have in the past, that sale of, some sale of cars is a permitted accessory use with repair shops, then you might find that it's permitted here. And, I mean, it's your decision, but if you find that five is too many and will overwhelm the main use, which, I don't know, you got to go and see the site, I guess, and think about it some more, then you might say three is permitted. Or you might say that five is just fine, and then you'd move on to the site plan aspects of those five spaces. Are they properly situated? Is the drainage okay? Is there still internal circulation sufficient to support them? So you'd look at it under the site plan aspect. But that's it as far as the accessory use issue. You're going to have to determine, are they permitted with gasoline stations, filling stations slash repair shops? And if so, is the proposed limited use to five clearly secondary to the use? That's not a legal issue, that's a factual issue for the board.
In the history of this, Ron, did it come up that previous applications for this property, were car sales involved?
Not to my knowledge.
Not even back-
I don't even recall specifically that the canopy had been approved, as has been alleged by the applicant's representative, but we'll research that.
Okay.
I believe the canopies were, I seem to recall that, but I don't think car sales were ever approved to that site.
I don't believe that car sales were ever called out, or, and there's an argument that they were never needed to be approved, that they were always existing to some extent with the repair bays and could be called grandfathered. I know that we don't like that word as attorneys, but, but.
I don't know if, but there's facts for that in the record, but if you say so.
But that said, it's, nobody's made a specific application prior to this, to my knowledge, for car sales. But certainly the canopy, I have a writing which says that it exists, that approval existed.
To stay on the issue of car sales, there has been a violation issued on the property for car sales by the CEO.
Doesn't think that they're grandfathered.
But we're, certainly we can, just a couple of things. I'm sorry, Chairman. So, obviously, the tanks are registered. The registration exists right at the station. There's a, there's a binder at every gas station, which, and I'm sure at Mr. Abraham's station.
Tanks turned to 2013.
Well, yeah. So, not only are the tanks new, so 2013 is their, is their final date, but there are, there's a 10-day report. The tanks are checked on a regular basis and they, there's no way you could be operating without those tanks being registered. And there's, there's been no spills since you've opened?
No.
And so, the last spill that we had was closed under a previous owner in 2012, and he's been here since 2014. But of course, you're welcome to, to review the DEC records, but I don't think they're necessarily germane to this application. And I'm happy, of course, to, if the, if the board prefers a long form, I'm happy to submit a long form EAF. I just want, this is an application which would normally be a short form EAF. This is, and, and for me, this is a gracious site. I'm used to dealing with, you know, a quarter of an acre. At the most, a half an acre for gas stations. To have an acre site and to have somebody who only needs to have five cars that he wants to sell versus what, what we see down county, this is fairly expansive. And so, it's, I think there's plenty of room for it. Thank you.
According to Ron's memo, this is unlisted under SECRE.
Again, I think you really want to await receipt of a revised EAF that's more inclusive. What you have in front of you, even, even though it's been revised once, is still very inadequate to describe the environmental setting of the project.
Well, the only other issues are declaring it a minor and a site inspection. Anything else that we should, it's too early to do a public hearing?
I don't think so. I think you need to have a site inspection.
Yeah.
Can I tell you though, I'm, I'm sorry, Ron. Although Ron's technically correct that you don't have the final EAF in, and so you maybe jump in the gun a little bit as far as typing this under SECRE, this, I'm confident is going to be an unlisted action at the end of the day. So, if you type it as an unlisted action and then you get in the revised EAF and pokey smoke, there's something we hadn't thought of, it's a type one, you can always retype it after that.
Okay.
You want to move on SECRE as soon as you can on any application. So, I would go ahead and type it an unlisted action. I'd make my county referral and then I'd do my site visit. I think that's about as far as he can take it tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Motion to Dennis.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
You had mentioned that there's a convenience store there also?
There's a small convenience store?
Yeah. Where is the customer parking?
Where did that, sorry?
I see the display spots, the five, two employee and one handicap.
So, on Nelson Lane, you have, you have a few spots there. And then, and then of course, yeah, so there are, there are three designated spots along Nelson Lane. There is a large area. I don't know how most towns interpret.
Looking at the drawing, I don't see it, so that's why.
Oh, over here.
No, I see Nelson Lane, but I don't see parking designated.
That's employees.
Right there. No, he said Nelson. This is employee, employee, handicap.
All the board is suggesting is that you illustrate.
No parking, no parking.
A full estate of parking required for the various uses you have. That's all.
I didn't, I was looking at it as an existing site with no changes to parking, no changes. The canopy doesn't really impact anything. There's no more employees, there's no.
No, but parking would be for internal circulation because you want five designated spots for vehicle sales.
We'll, we'll look at the site plan. Yep?
Yeah, I'm just indicating.
In most locations, they also provide for, they count the, the spots at the pumps as well as parking.
That's when people stay and go in the store and you're waiting to pump your gas.
Hopefully buy something.
Yeah, that could be shown on there. Because looking at the drawings, it doesn't indicate.
Of course.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Motion to, under SECRE, indicate this is unlisted. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Classify this as a, motion to classify as a minor project. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Site inspection. We definitely need a site visit.
31st is the first day.
Okay. Either three.
Sunday's at 9:30.
Did you say 31?
Yeah.
In March 31st or April 7th?
31st.
Anybody have a problem with the 31st? Dave?
No.
Okay. Move to, set the site inspection for March 31st?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We'll wait to do, before we set a public hearing.
Is there to be a public hearing? I wouldn't.
I think it will be.
It's a minor, I don't know, it's not a requirement.
I think there's a lot involved here.
It's not required.
Not required.
And the neighbor, neighbors have raised concerns.
Yeah. Not like it's out by itself somewhere along a major highway. This is, I'm a little certain we're going to require a public hearing.
Okay.
But not setting one up at the moment.
So, Ron, you're, we're not going to set up a, a public hearing? We're, we're just on for the next meeting?
We'll come back and, on the site visit, look at the EAF, take in Ron's comments, assuming there are no changes to the plan or at least no significant changes, set the public hearing for the month after.
There's just a lot of issues on this site. So, we'll get some of them cleared up and then we'll set a site. Once they're cleared up, I think there's, a public hearing should not be a problem, but we'll see.
Okay. I mean, it's, from my perspective, it's a previously approved canopy with, with a possibly valid existing approval on it. And what we have is a use which is also possibly legal, which we're putting forth and trying to improve. And it's a minor change, and I was hoping that we'd be able to truncate the process if possible. Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening. Thanks for having us.
The last item. Need some explanation, I think, Ron. Sorry. Glenn. Chris Buck, LL, 1657 LLC, revised site plan application.
Maybe say March 31st.
Yeah, I know you do. You're good. You're quality stuff. If I don't get in the brain here, huh? Yeah, Glenn.
As you all, I'm sure, remember, you approved this residential site plan quite a while ago and work has begun on it. But it's become apparent over time that there have been significant modifications to the site that have now gotten us to the position where everybody feels that amended site plan is in order, give you another look at it and, and, and bring ourselves into, so that our site plan conforms with what you approved. There are, they sort of happen gradually and I'm, well, I wish Tim were here because he's the architect. It's kind of the thing that happens when you have an architect running the site.
You're the one.
It's on record, you know.
That'll be in the minutes.
Yeah, that'll be in the minutes. That's okay. So, at any rate, I'll point out a couple of things. Your, your original approval had a, a driveway up to a site for a, an office building, a small office building up in the back of the property. Mr. Buck has decided not to build that. That was the first thing we, I talked to Ron about. And at that point, we felt that it would be sufficient to just, to exit out, say not to be built at this time, and we would just move ahead. But then, the next thing that happened is that Mr. Buck purchased the old greenhouse, the Fink, Richley Greenhouse, and, and decided that it would be better and easier to relocate the driveway across the upper part of that property than to rehabilitate and deal with the grades necessary to, to use the driveway that we originally planned to use. There were some, there's some grading now planned for the site. Landscape architect has, has become more, I shouldn't say more involved, but I guess I have to say more involved in the site. And so, we anticipate some more additional grading that we had not anticipated. So, those are the changes. The, there was, just before I leave this page, just what different about this than the existing conditions that you saw is that we did go out and we did survey what has been done, and we've added that. So, this existing condition drawing is a current drawing, or at least was a week ago. Another change that has happened, so we'll walk through the changes. The driveway coming in, the main driveway coming in is still at the same location. It still takes basically the same route to the house. The service drive to the barn is the same as, as far as it goes, but the original driveway going to the neighbor's property, who has an easement over the property, went to the north of the barn, which is now pretty much built and circles into the neighboring property to the south. Mr. Buck and the neighbor got together. They agreed to relocate the driveway, and they have in fact relocated the driveway. And ease, this easement that has, had been used for years has been extinguished in favor of a new easement that carries the neighbor off of the property at a, sooner rather than later during the process. And it increases the, the privacy between the houses to, to a more desirable extent. Here, so this driveway is about the same. This is the driveway from the road to the main house. The main house configuration has, has changed slightly. Ron's comments, asking for new elevations and new drawings, we'll get those. It's not been a major change in the house. There's still the underground garage. There's a, there's an indoor pool involved, but that's in a basement. The next change that happened is the, instead of the driveway, the service driveway, instead of coming in from the end of Gilbo Lane and up the hill, it's going to take a more, an easier path and get out to Gilbo Lane with less cut, less fill, less, and less grade to deal with. The original plan, I'd forgotten this, the original plan, it showed that the tennis court was going to be removed. They felt they would rather rehabilitate the tennis court and keep it in service. So, we lost the office building and the related septic system in well. We decided to retain the tennis courts. There was some grading towards, out towards the southwest of the house that is now planned and, and was, was not shown on the previous plan. So, the disturbance area has, has increased, and we've incorporated that into the plan. What has happened to date is the, the electric utilities have been installed, the barn has been built. You were kind enough to give us a dispensation with regard to the barn. A building permit did issue on the reconstruction of the remaining part of the historic house. The building permit has not issued with regard to any additions to the house. So, there is structural work going on. If you go inside, you'll see really quite large, surprisingly large beams and, and stuff to, to help strengthen the structure of the house. I think I've covered, I think I've covered the changes. So, as you can see, there are several of them. Maybe any one wasn't so, so great with the possible exception of rerouting the driveway. But in some, the discussion among the builder, among the designer, among, with Mr. Gaynor, was that the best approach here was to come in and ask you for an amended site plan approval. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to try to answer them.
I want to tax your throat. How you doing?
You have a technical review from my office. The, you know, in summary, Glenn has identified the changes to the plan. They only recently came to my attention when I was asked to endorse the site plan drawings covering the original approval. And at first, I thought it was just eliminating the small office and elimination of that long driveway to it and the relocation of the driveway, but obviously, it's extended beyond that. And so, I think the applicant has rightly filed an amended site plan application. Is there a new EAF? I presume there is.
I believe so.
Okay. And so, you're going to wind up going through the same process you did before. You should qualify it, or classify it as a, as a major site plan, as the prior one was. That's, that's an initial thing to do. And you'll have to, let's see, one thing that was missing, since it's a major site plan application, you have to get a new no violations letter from the CEO. That was missing in the package. And then you should make referral to Putnam County Department of Health, because it's fronting along 9D. I just remind the board that in the original application, because the historic structure was being modified, you did make referral to New York State Parks, Recreation and Historic Preservation. So, there was some interplay with that state agency that reviews those issues. They did sign off on the modifications being done. I guess I turn to you. Could you tell me if there's any, any changes to the historic building that's occurring different than the original site plan that requires another referral?
I'll double check, but my understanding is no, there hasn't, there is not.
Okay. All right. And as, as was typical, you, you made referral to the local fire department. As I said, New York State Parks did respond, but Cold Spring Fire Department Number One did not. I presume they felt it was not necessary.
Garrison fire or?
This is, this is Cold Spring.
Cold Spring.
This is Cold Spring. So, you're going to go through the same process.
Yeah.
It's a, it's an unlisted action. You can classify it as such now. And then we've got some technical things for them to address in the site plans. So, again, you should define it as a major site plan, make the referrals to Putnam County Planning and, and anyone else if you think it's appropriate, but I don't know that it's necessary. And then determine if you need to make a new in-site inspection, and a public hearing is required since it's a major site plan.
Any comments, Steve?
No, I think Ron pretty much nailed it. I mean, the only thing I would say is, you know, classify it as major, make the courtesy referral to county planning, declare it an unlisted action. You're going to be responsible agency, lead agency in SECRE review. You don't need to circulate there, no other involved agencies. Send a notice to Putnam County DOH. I don't know if you want to do the fire department again or not, maybe because of the driveways, I don't know.
Garrison fire, or?
This is, this is Cold Spring.
Cold Spring.
This is Cold Spring. So you're going to go through the same process.
Yeah.
It's a, it's an unlisted action. You can classify it as such now. And then we've got some technical things for them to address in the site plans. So again, you should define it as a major site plan, make the referrals to Putnam County Planning, and, and anyone else if you think it's appropriate, but I don't know that it's necessary. And then determine if you need to make a new in-site inspection, and a public hearing is required since it's a major site plan. Thank you.
Any comments, Steve?
No, I, I think Ron pretty much nailed it. I mean, the only thing I would say is, you know, classify it as major, make the courtesy referral to county planning, declare it an unlisted action. You're going to be responsible agency, lead agency in, in SECRE review. You don't need to circulate, there are no other involved agencies. Send a notice to Putnam County DOH. I don't know if you want to do the fire department again or not, maybe because of the driveways, I don't know, but I mean, it's up to you. If you want to do a site inspection, that's, that's fine. The only I'd say is, I, I think everybody's pretty familiar with this, this site, and we've already had one public hearing on it, so maybe schedule a public hearing for next month and have Ron prepare the resolutions. I mean, they're pretty much the same as last time, only, you know, a couple of changes. And then that way, you can expedite it for him as far as that goes, we clean everything up.
Okay. Any comments from the board? Okay, I need a bunch of motions to declare this an unlisted action.
So move.
Second.
A second.
All in favor? A motion to declare the major site plan? Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Referrals to Putnam County Planning Department and Putnam County, Putnam County Health. I don't know that we need to do the fire department, but if you want to include that. A motion to affect referrals?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
A second.
All in favor?
Are we including the fire department?
Yeah, that's the formality.
Okay.
And schedule a public hearing for next month? Motion?
I'll make that.
Second.
But just for this sake, since you should probably also just include DOT, they're technically involved. I know we have permit applications in for both the DOT and.
Have you already gotten approvals from DOT and?
We don't have the approval for DOT. I believe we have the approvals for the health department, but I, I'm not absolutely certain. So I, I would just do DOT because it's the, the only one you're missing and.
What permit are you getting from DOT?
Highway entry permit.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we modify that motion to include the DOT? Anyone? Second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Ron, why don't you leave? Anything else?
Were you going to do a site visit or not?
Oh, sorry, yes. Last one on the list. Do we need to do a site visit? Anybody want, you want to go back and look? Anyone? Motion to do a site visit? Hearing none? Move on? Okay.
Steve mentioned directing Ron to write up resolutions.
Oh, yeah, you might want to.
Okay. Motion. Motion to direct you to write up resolutions to approval?
I'll make that.
Second.
A second.
All in favor? Thank you. Anything else? No. Motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Hey, Ron, take care, huh, buddy?